Good evening, welcome to this meeting of the Treasury Management and Investment Subcommittee. This meeting is being streamed live on our website and being recorded. Remote meetings do cause technical problems from time to time, we've just had one. And it may be the rest of the meeting won't go as smoothly as meetings held face to face in person. So thank you to everybody for bearing with us so far. If we lose the live stream, I'll adjourn the meeting for 10 minutes or so. So that hopefully it can be fixed, if it can't, then we'll adjourn the meeting until a future date. Councillors have been given guidance on the conduct of remote meetings and it's worth emphasising just a few points. Hopefully, all members of the committee are taking part from a place where you won't be distracted or disturbed. When not actively participating, please ensure that you keep audio and video turned off. If you wish to speak, please type an H in the chat box and I'll call you when it's your turn to speak. All questions, contributions must come through the chair. So please remember to turn on your video and audio when you wish to speak. That's to say when I call you to speak and then turn them off again when you've finished speaking. If any councillor has an interest in any item on the agenda, they should declare it please. And keep their audio and video off whilst it's being considered. They won't be included in any vote on the subject. And finally, when it comes to a decision on any of the issues before us. I'll assume if there's silence, that no one opposes the proposition and that everyone is in agreement. If anyone does say that they're opposed, then I'll ask for a formal vote and Dan Bird will conduct that. So that's the introductions over with, so we're into the agenda. And I think there can't be any apologies for absence because I think all the members of the committee are here. Is that right? Dan? I'll pause if you wish to interject, I'll take silence as confirmation that that is correct. So I'll move on to the minutes of the last meeting then, which was held on the 16th of December. There is one minor change to the minutes as they were originally published. Which was a typographical error. In the final paragraph of five. It should have said, decisions on individual investments were still for officers to make in line with the strategy. It didn't quite say that, but I think it's been corrected now. So, subject to that minor change to the wording to correct that typographical error. Are we all content to adopt the minutes of the meeting and I will sign them at the first opportunity to do so? I'm going to take the absence of any responses meaning yes, everybody's content. So let's move on to declarations of interests. As it says in the agenda, you're reminded that members must declare any interests they know they have in items of business on the agenda and they must do so at this point or as soon as they become aware of the interest. If the interest is a disclosable pecuniary interest, they're also obliged to notify the monitor monitoring officer within 28 days of the meeting. So does anybody wish to declare any interest? No, I don't see any hands going up. So we'll move on to item four in the agenda then, which is public question time. And as it says in the agenda, members of the public may ask questions. But Dan Bird, I don't think we've had any questions, so can you just confirm that?
Yeah, I can confirm we haven't received any chair. And sorry at the beginning there, when I was supposed to run through the list of attendees, my wifi had dropped out. But I do seem to be back online fully now.
Ah, in that case, do you want to go through the list of attendees now?
I can do, yeah.
Yeah, we should have done that earlier, apologies for missing that.
That's okay, yeah, we haven't had any apologies and the councillors we've got attending are yourself as chair. And then councillors Bracken, Dan Clark, Paul Clark, Gally, Sozin and Whitehead. And the officers present are Mandy Fay, Phil Reeves and Joe Reedy. Thank you, Joe.
And apologies, I ought to have introduced myself, I'm Chris Davidson. I'm a councillor for Patching Hall and chair this subcommittee. Okay, so if there's no public question time, then we move on to item five in the agenda. Which is the Treasury Management Outturn Report. And I'll hand over at this point to Phil Reeves.
Thank you, Chair. This is a report we make annually to the Treasury Subcommittee. It's a report on what the activity undertaken last year in Treasury Management. It notes that Treasury Management is not a risk-free activity. It also identifies that there was one breach of counterparty limits last year. This breach did not result in a loss or create a measurable increase in risk, but unfortunately a transaction was undertaken. Which wasn't in line with council policy and therefore has to be reported. The report identifies as well that the income budget for the year was 540,000, but actual income was 770,000. The additional income came mostly from a higher than expected cash balance, which reflects some capital expenditures raised into later years. Now, the report is also very useful in terms of setting the tone for the future Treasury Management operations. And I'd like to highlight a couple of points. First, the CCLA Property Fund, that has been impacted by Covid-19. And the fund is down in value and has been closed temporarily for redemptions. The income will be lower in 2021, but will exceed significantly returns from cash. These are reported in the report and I won't go into the detail of that. The fund itself has stood up relatively well compared to other property investments. This is due to the fact it's got a lower holding of retail properties compared to most. It's about 70% exposed to warehouses, industrial units and office blocks. And shops make up about 3% of the portfolio. I think it's important also to draw out, though it's not in the report, that there are structural changes happening in the UK economy. Greater homeworking, increased online shopping. These structural changes will be considered when we look at the CCLA Property Fund and whether we should continue to hold the investment. It doesn't mean that we shouldn't do, it's just we need to take extra care and look at extra factors when we look at that holding. The policy to invest in the property fund will of course be part of the considerations in the mid-year update that we take to the Subcommittee and Cabinet and Council in the autumn. That update enables members to review the policy and consider changes to it. Other things that we need to think about that have come out of the report, mostly from Covid, are the fact that the way we invest at the moment is still within the strategy, but has changed because we're going for a much shorter length of duration in our investments. This is in line with sit for guidance, but I also think, to be honest, it's in line with the respect of the fact that income cash flows this year are very uncertain. So therefore, we're trying to keep our cash flow very short and make sure we have sufficient liquidity to meet all our bills and liabilities. What that means in practice is we're undertaking a lot of money market funds. These are short dated money market funds with next day access or even instant access. The capital value is very stable, it's not fixed, but it's very stable. In addition, we'll also be using notice accounts and fixed generation deposits with banks and local authorities. So the way that we invest is very much now aimed at the short term and ensuring liquidity rather than necessarily maximizing yield or the way we choose to structure the portfolio will be very much around that liquidity issue. I think also stating the obvious, I don't expect interest income to achieve the budgeted level in 2021. Clearly cash flow is weaker and we have lower interest rates. Members will obviously get a chance to review the strategy again, as I said, in autumn. And that will go to the Subcommittee, Cabinet and then Council. I think that sums up what I wanted to go through, are there any questions, Chair?
Anybody wish to... Yes, councillor Paul Clark.
Okay, I actually hadn't indicated, but fine. I read this report, I had to read it a couple of times actually. The, obviously this is for 1920, but it's the comments from the fund manager about the recovery in 2021. I think at best, that's optimistic. I've actually listened to a few of their webcasts and their CEO, who's been in the business a long time. But obviously broadcasting from the sell side in this respect has got quite a few of the estimates for GDP etc wrong by some degree. And I think the recovery in 2021 for this sector is very optimistic. Now, obviously, we all know the discussions we had last year about this. But what I wanted to highlight was fact was that these types of funds, when they're in lockdown, you can't exit, you can't add, but you certainly can't get your money back. And whatever happens to this, I don't know whether the majority of the portfolio is covered by lease insurance. In which case, they are able to project what the income is going to be from these properties. I mean, I think they've got about 77 properties on their books. And you're quite right, it's nearly two thirds are in industrial units and warehouses. And that actually, and offices, sorry. And that actually is sector that I was most concerned about because I think we've all noticed, anyone who's been in a business, that people working from home, productivity has actually gone up for people working from home. And I think it's a lifestyle or a work place that's going to become more commonplace. Now, how that manifests itself in demand for offices and industrial warehouses, I'm not sure. But I wouldn't have thought that the immediate outlook is great for that. Because we don't know how many of the businesses that occupy these 77 properties are actually still in business. Thank you.
Did you, Chair, would you like me to comment?
Yeah, please do.
Absolutely, I highlight as you do that there clearly is structural changes going on within how we live. And that's one of the things, obviously, as I've said, we will be looking at when we look at this fund. So I think it's a very valid point and we're looking at that. Clearly, it's early days in terms of that. In terms of the portfolio itself that they hold, they have been getting 70 to 75% of their rent in. Now, clearly what we will find is over the next few months that it will get. There'll be more information available as we go through that because rents are paid on quarter days, as you know. And obviously, the first one was predominantly affected by Covid, but they had lots of, companies had lots of cash. And again, we're expecting and they are expecting that the position to improve. And I think that's the thing that we will be watching as officers very carefully, to make sure that that cash does arrive and we will take a view on it. I come back to again, though, in terms of returns on this fund, they have been exceptional compared to the options of doing cash. So over the life of the investment, we've effectively generated £2 million of income compared to about 300 if we just done it in cash. 300,000 that is. On top of which, there's that capital appreciation, which I completely agree is obviously going to be suffering slightly during this period. So again, we've got to question whether the fund can adapt to those changes, as you said. And that's something we will clearly look at with our advisers as well, Arling Close. Does that help?
Can I just add to that, Chair?
Yeah, carry on.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think that there is a premium attached to yield on things, asset classes like this. Mainly because they have a higher degree of risk, as we have just found out. Because we wouldn't be able to get our money back even if we wanted to. But the actual mechanism, what's happening in the market, I mean, obviously no one saw this. But the things I was warning about was the impact of such a risk event. We don't know how that comes, but when it does, the impact is not dissimilar to what we've seen. The problem is, we're at the end of the market where we're predominantly cash and nothing else. Because we don't have any other, I mean, we offer a service, we're not investment managers. But to me, the pressures are all about putting money into, we're being encouraged to take these risks because the yields are so low, because QE is going to just get more and more and more as they support the economy. You've got, you had price earnings ratios at something like approaching 20% on the FTSE listed companies. That was an accident waiting to happen. So we basically had a bit of a perfect storm situation. And at the end of it, what happens is you have minimal or no yield at all on short-term assets. But as the rule says, it's better to have a return of your money than looking at the return on it. And we have got 5 or 6%, I think the dividend's now about 4.5 on CCLA for dividend. But it's more than short-dated money, I agree. But you're quite right to switch your emphasis to short-dated money because we just don't know what's around the corner. Thank you.
Do you want to respond to that, Phil? Question in a moment, but.
Yeah, sure, I will, I mean, again, it comes back to, we hold most of our cashes quite rightly in short-dated instruments. Therefore, there is an argument, we can choose to hold some of it in this slightly longer dated type of investment. And again, when we've identified this, I think it comes back to the perspective of how long you perceive these troughs to be on the income and the capital values and whether you expect to recover them. And that's the decision that you have to make when holding an investment like this. If you believe it's going to recover, then you should perhaps continue to hold it. Because those future income returns, they're much higher. So it's about holding things in the longer term potentially. So that's why there is a balance where we've got quite a lot liquid and we can manage our cash flow with that. Plus, we can choose to have these slightly longer dated investments.
I'm going to ask Paul Clark to stand down for a moment, I'll give you another go later if you want one. But Martin Bracken would like to come in.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to say that I totally support the idea of looking at this when we're in a position to, a bit further down the road. We don't know what the recovery is going to be like, it might be a V-shaped recovery. It might be a U-shaped recovery, it might be an L-shaped recovery, we really don't know. And I think once we're in a better position to understand what's happening to the rents, whether they're actually going up or whether they're actually going down. And when we can actually get access to this fund, we'll make the decision, in position to make a decision about where we go forward. But my question was actually regarding to the actual short-date funds. I know that you say that you're primarily taking them on very short dates. So is that sub-one week or are you going out for any period of time at all? Is it all overnight and one week or is it going out to one, two and three months?
Sorry, it is all overnight, there are instant access funds that are available the next day between the hours of nine and one, as it were. So that's how we're choosing to do it. We may do some additional deposits with local authorities, with banks that may be in the three to six month period. But they will only be a small part of our portfolio with the new investments. Plus, we might use some call accounts from HSBC and from Dwyer's Bank that are in the 30 and 90 day period. Where again, we can call the money back, but they offer good returns.
Sorry, Chair, can I come back?
Yeah, carry on.
Just to say that, I mean, have we had any reason to look at any of the credit limits for any of the counterparties to see whether or not we consider them to still be good credit or are we quite happy with the ways at the moment?
What we do is we do use Arling Close, our Treasury advisers, to offer the assessments of credit worth. Because we're relying on that kind of expertise that simply we wouldn't have in-house. At the moment, all the things that we have chosen to do are within the guidance of Arling Close and we'd continue to do that given the uncertainties. Local authorities, again, we'd look at them, but that's more difficult to do. What you're still relying on is that overall badge, it's a local authority, it's public sector, the government is not going to allow it to fail. But again, we're cautious with those and we'd limit the amounts depending on the local authority and the size of it.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Okay. Councillor Whitehead would like to come in.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I'm conscious of councillor Clark's concerns and he's had those before. The total is about, what, 12% of our total portfolio, I think, in cash. So yes, he is at the bottom of that ladder, but it's a fairly long ladder with all the very short-term funds that are above it really. So I understand, you know, we saw what happened with the great investor who got all his money locked into a property fund and so on. And lost, well, residents lost a lot of money. But in this particular case, I think that we're reasonably safe with it all. And therefore, I'm happy with what we're doing. But as councillor Bracken rightly says, we need to review it again before too long. And we have that ability to do so. It's difficult, when you look at £20 million limits for local authorities, yeah, who knows how they're doing. And I hope those limits are not too high, they seem somewhat higher than I thought they might be. Although we're well within those limits, so it's something perhaps our advisers could look at just once more to make sure that those limits are sensible. I think that would be my view on this. One other minor point, and I mean, there's no logical reason why most of us can't have our videos on screen all the time with our sound turned off. There are seven members of the group and we can have nine on screen at once. It's a lot easier to see the faces and see hands wave or wherever it happens to be. Rather than keep switching on and off, keep the sound off, absolutely. But there's no logical reason why the video should be off unless our computer expert can tell me opposite. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll take that last comment as feedback and a suggestion as to how we should manage these online meetings going forwards. But I suggest that we stick to the, we stick to the current rules for the moment. But I'm sure those rules are under review. I think that Phil Reeves would like to come back in, so.
Thank you, Chair, sorry, I should have made clear apologies. The limits that you see on the schedule relate to last year, we have lowered those local authority limits, they are down. Also as well, we operate below those limits usually based on officer criteria. So they were like the maximum limits for the class. So yes, those limits have come down, apologies.
Okay, you got in before me, I was going to agree with Roy Whitehead on that. That if we've got £50 million to invest, putting 40% of it into one local authority does look as though we might be we might be suffering concentration risk beyond what we'd be comfortable with. So what is the, what is the limit for this year, can you remember?
It's 10 million, but we don't operate to that, we operate below that. So like somebody like a district, we might choose to lend 3 million to. But it comes back to, local authorities are like your lender of last resort, you'd lend to those rather than some other counterparties. So it's better to have a higher limit with those than perhaps say with some of the banks. Because what can happen is, the market can dry up for us because we don't do it in very large sums. And trying to get rid of money is almost the phrase I'm going to use here, to other counterparties can be difficult. So you've got to have some flexibility in those limits. So we might choose to do a larger deposit shorter if we can't find a home for it within our existing counterparty limits.
Okay. Can I come back to the CCLA fund that Paul Clark was concerned about? And I think we've probably got a consensus that once it opens up and we do have a choice as to what we could do. We'll want to review where we are and take into account the facts as we understand them at that point. But I was just going to try and do a historical perspective. I've said before in this Subcommittee that the investment in the CCLA fund is something that the previous administration decided upon some years ago. And I've said that I thought that that was a good investment. Because we've had, even without, even after the recent reductions in capital value, we've had very significant capital appreciation and a very good income return. But my understanding is that that's something that we put in, not with a view to watching the movements in the markets and trying to get out quickly if things turn down, but holding for the medium to long term. So the expectation was that we would be holding this money for three to five years at least. And that over that period, we would expect that the markets would have some fluctuations. But we'd be able to get out and get our capital back and have a good total return over that period. And I don't know whether, Phil, you want to comment on that or whether councillor Gally wants to comment, given it was your strategy originally? Sorry, go ahead councillor Gally first and then we'll.
Yeah, I'm more than happy to make the comment, your premise is exactly right, we did it on a three to five year basis. It was when that part of the market was quite solid. The returns were, for want of a better phrase, too good to ignore on a medium to long-term basis. But we did make the decision early on, particularly with Phil involved as well and with Arling Close, that we would monitor this on a six-month to annual basis. Because all good things eventually come to an end. And at the moment, even though there has been a drop of the interest rate, it is still way and above anything else that we've got. And it's still above the sort of level that we would in our previous life have thought, hang on a minute, we need to be looking now to see whether we should be getting out of this and looking at different investments. Or finding out for Marling Close why it is starting to go down on a regular basis. That's something that we can look at quite seriously in the autumn, when we have, I think it's the next meeting. But we're, well, we would be comfortable with it as it is at the moment. But we are very aware that we are in extremely weird times, particularly on financial markets. And it's something that certainly in my position, if I was in your position, I would still be looking over my shoulder all the time and seeking regular advice from Marling Close, as I know Phil does on almost a daily basis. So in that respect, I think it's good in our portfolio at the moment. But it's something that you can't ignore, there's always a diary now coming out at some stage. It's probably more frequent now than it probably was a year ago. But that's my, that's my brief summary of where I think we are. Happy to continue at the moment, thank you.
Okay, thanks, John. Phil, did you want to come back?
Yeah, and very simply, you know, it's, all our investments are reviewed regularly. This is one that's a long-term one and we review regularly, we take advice. At the moment, it comes back to the returns are very good, they form part of the budget. Obviously, if we remove them, we face a different sort of risk, that will always come into the discussions we have to make. It is quite clear that we have to monitor the situation quite closely over the coming quarters to see whether this is something we want to continue to hold. But what we've always looked at is there will be fluctuations and we're just hoping this is a fluctuation rather than a decision to sell. But that's something, of course, we always look at.
I don't have any more requests to speak, but councillor Paul Clark, I asked you to stand down and promised you that I'd give you the opportunity to come back if you wanted to. So would you like to come back?
Well, I'm sort of glad it's not my decision now to make, that goes to Cabinet presumably. It's, it does represent a good yield, but it's got the risk and we're now seeing the risk. That's the, that is the point I made last year, it's the point I made in 2017. I don't know what we term to be medium to long term. Because councillor Gally just alluded to the fact it's five years, well, I think you put the money in in 2014, so we're already past that. And medium-term maturities in other asset classes are usually about sort of six to 10 years anyway. So on that basis, if the fund manager is right with their valuation as at the 31st of March, I'm not sure how they can be because they've not had access to all the numbers and the rent coming in etc. But if they are accurate and that continues, then, then fine, we'll get away with it. But I venture that the figures that have been coming out for the economy in April and May lead me to think that these are going to be substantially lowered. Thanks.
Okay, so unless anybody else wants to say anything, I think the summary of that is that we're more nervous about this now than we were last time this committee, the Subcommittee met. We don't though have any decision to make because we couldn't get out at the moment even if we wanted to. So we continue to hold the, I'm not sure about the terminology, but the expectation is that this is money that we currently envisage that we can hold in this fund for three to five years if we need to. But we will keep that under review and we'll certainly. But we will keep that under review and we'll certainly come back and have a further debate about it at the next meeting in the autumn, which I think is October, is it?
Yes, it's in October.
Right. So is there anything else on this item or I think what we're asked to do is to recommend the outturn report to Cabinet. So I take it that unless anybody disagrees, we are accepting the recommendation to, accepting the proposition that we should recommend the outturn report to Cabinet. Silence. So I think that's what we've just done. So we are now moving on then to the next item on the agenda. Item six, which is the non-treasury investment strategy. And I think Mandy Fay is going to speak to that. Over to you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So Amanda Fay, Director of Financial Services for the council. I'm just going to give a short introduction on this report before handing over to Joe Reedy, our Corporate Property Services Manager, to take us through a little bit more of the discussion. So I wanted to pick up first just what the purpose of the report is, which is to consider the work programme of this subcommittee and give effect to the revised terms of reference that were agreed by council in May in respect of what we call non-cash investments. The report, and in particular Appendix Three, is designed to facilitate a discussion this evening to establish what information is required by the committee at its future meetings to enable it to carry out this expanded role, which is to monitor non-cash investments in the same way that it does for the cash investments under the Treasury Management Policy and to comment on and make recommendations to Cabinet on the investment strategy. So in effect, in the future, we'd be doing exactly the same thing that we've just done with Phil for the treasury and cash investments. We'll be doing, taking that same process for the non-cash or property investments. So previously circulated a report which is attached to, which is added to the agenda pack for reference, explaining in the background as to why this was being proposed. And that's partly due, due to changes in investment guidance from SIFRA, MHCLG, Treasury etcetera. But also to enable members to really understand the risk profile of the council's investments and bringing together consideration of both those cash and non-cash investments under one subcommittee where it can be really transparent and really scrutinised as one piece. Our existing capital investment strategy provides some high level data already in respect of non-cash investments. But it will be for this committee to recommend investment parameters for the next strategy and to set up a suite of indicators to monitor performance of those investments. And that process is set out in table 4.2 of the covering report, which shows the kind of cycle of meetings, June, October and December, where once we've gathered some information, we've chosen the information this evening that you'd like to see. We'd bring that back at the next meeting for consideration and agree what we want in terms of future monitoring. And then we'd move to a cycle of looking at outturn report, mid-year report and strategy development on an annual basis. So at this point, what I'd like to do is pass over to Joe Reedy to take us through Appendix Three and just start that discussion on what information it is that you would need in order to carry out that role. Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy. So just following on from what Mandy has just set out really. What, what I've tried to contain in this report is a little bit of background on the sort of criteria that we consider when we're, we're looking at investments. And a bit of a brief overview of the, the portfolio as it stands. So hopefully you've, you've got the background to then decide what level of reporting, what items you need, would like to see reported on as, as we've outlined earlier. So the, the first part of the report takes us through the, the investment criteria, expands upon the criteria that was in last year's strategy. It's, I'd like to say we don't have an active requirement anytime. We don't go knocking on people's doors, looking for property. We are agile and ready to react to opportunities as they arise or if they complement our existing portfolio. So the criteria that we, we set out here are pretty much as you would expect. Assets are to be located only within the city. They should generate an immediate income, provide a, a yield with a clear margin over the debt if debt is needed. Assets will be selected to give a balance of the portfolio. I'll come on to a bit more about that later. Investment grade properties where, where possible. Lot sizes, we're trying to increase the lot size to between three and 10 million on an average. And we, we look for ideally single occupancy tenants to reduce the, the management complexities that, that would be needed to, to manage a, a multi-let building, although we do have some multi-let buildings. It's just that they are, they can be quite management intensive. We consider covenant strength and we, we, we view that on a D and B score rating. And we also look where possible to see if there, there are assets that that can benefit from some asset management initiatives, whether that be through lease renewals or lease extensions, extending the properties, whatever it may be. So those are the, the general criteria that we, we consider when we, we look at investments. So turning to the portfolio as it stands, portfolio is round about 80, 85 million pounds, produces just over £5 million worth of, of income. And, and what we've selected as, as our investment portfolio here, it, just to be clear, it doesn't include all of our property holdings. So it doesn't include our, what I would class as our regeneration holdings. So for example, the gasworks aren't included in this section because that is a regeneration project and is, is dealt with elsewhere. So we are biased in the portfolio in the retail sector. That is clearly down to the size of the asset holding at High Chelma. We've been quietly trying to rebalance the portfolio over the last couple of years, selling off some of our, our retail assets in favour of office and industrial properties. And, you know, as much as we try, unfortunately, until the portfolio is, is much larger, we will never be able to redress that balance unless we were to dispose of High Chelma, which is a conversation for, for another time. So we, we are trying to balance it. It is a difficult proposition at this time because of the, the, the size and weight of, of High Chelma. But set out then at the bottom of the, the page, we are suggesting the criteria that we would like to report on. We think this would give you a, an understanding of what's been happening in the portfolio, what will be happening over the coming, over the coming period. And also, you know, we, we will be monitoring and reporting on tenant activity and looking at how they're performing and done, and, and looking at their accounts to make sure that they are still the tenant we thought that they were when we purchased the property. So that's it from me. Probably back to the councillor Davison for any discussion or questions.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Thanks, Mandy before you. So anybody want to speak on this? Who wants to open up? Councillor Sosian. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Can I just ask if there are any difficulty in distinguishing between a commercial property and another property in, in the listing? Thank you.
Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, so not, not in, not in this listing. These, these are all properties that are easily identifiable as investment properties. We've deliberately excluded things like cafes in parks, that kind of stuff. We don't class them specifically as investment properties. So in, in this, in these terms, know that there is, there is no problem.
Councillor Bracken. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Just a, a quick one. It does say in the criteria that we are going to be investigating, investing in properties in the city. I presume that means the entire district includes Southwood and Ferrars, as I'm sure they wouldn't like us to be thinking we're dis, we're discounting them.
Joe, I'm sure the answer is yes.
Yes, that, that, that really should be borough wide rather than citywide. Yes, that, that, that's correct. Within, within the, the borough boundary.
Except we're not a borough any longer, are we?
Yeah.
Yeah, within the, within the Chelmsford City Council District boundary, not just within the the, the built up areas.
Correct, yeah.
Perhaps it needs to say that then, Chair, just to make sure.
To make sure we don't upset anybody from Southwood and Ferrars who might think that we're prejudicing them, but I'm sure we're not. Councillor Paul Clark.
Thank you. I'd just like to know whether the, the entire portfolio of property that we own, only 85 million, I think you said, is, is for investment purposes. I mean, I, I know we were going to discuss this and how it all pans out, but I think it would be interesting to know how much, I think you said it yields about £5 million a year as an investment. But all the other properties as well obviously comes at a cost if we're owning it and using it ourselves. And at some point we have to offset and work out what the net, net is out of all this. And the other question I wanted to ask actually, given I, I read an article that had come from the PWLB about how they're thinking of changing. And one of the interesting points they raised was that councils wouldn't be allowed to go to their window if they had debt to yield properties or investments. Now, I'm presuming from what you've just said, that's, that we don't have any of those, but it would be interesting going forward to know that that is something that might be brought in, that we wouldn't be able to use PWLB on that basis. Thanks.
Joe, I'm hoping you're coming back in.
Okay, so yeah, the, the rest of the portfolio is, is looked at consistently in terms of operation and use. There are a number of residential properties within the portfolio that are delivering services led returns rather than financial. So there is a balance in how we assess the portfolio and its performance. Obviously, we have a duty in that area to perform and some of the assets we hold are in, you know, held to satisfy some of those service responsibilities. We are undertaking a review currently of all of our assets and that is done every, every four or five years. The current view should be, review should be finished later this year. But it is constantly reviewed, probably not assessed in the same way as the investment portfolio though. And yet debt, debt to yield, no, we, we, we don't have any borrowings at this stage. You know, that, that's not been a, a consideration for us. I think the, you know, the, the guidance is to try and avoid councils repeating the spellfallen examples of this world where they go and invest, you know, five, six times their, their, their size in a property portfolio. And, you know, we, we're far from that and would never, never advocate that, that position. What we are trying to do is probably build through. So we would borrow to, you know, build through some of these assets and invest in delivery of assets. I think that's probably where we might look towards those kind of funds if we need to.
Can I just come back on that set? I just want to, I just thought of something while you was talking.
Yeah.
Maybe I didn't, I sort of didn't expand on it enough, but I, I, reading the terms of reference and where we're going with this, the, the point I was trying to make is that if we shift from commercial property investments into more of the sort of, let's say, domestic market in order to provide more housing that we actually own. Now, how you quantify the yield on that, as, because as you just said, I mean, the actual portfolio is probably nearer 300 million than, than 80. I mean, if you put it all in its entirety. At some point, you get this shift away from what commercial property yields to what does domestic property that we own yield, given that, as you just said, we're providing the service rather than looking at it as an investment, because obviously the, you're expecting domestic property to go up, not exponentially, but it does. And you have maybe a little bit more control over that than say selling a share or, or your half share of High Chelma, for instance. You have more control over that because they're more individual units, but you did say three to 10 million. I think you'd probably have to go where councillor Whitehead lives to buy a house for that amount, but the, the, the idea that you, you need more houses or dwellings to provide that sort of, I'll refrain from social housing, but more housing that we actually own. That does provide a yield in as, in a way, but you, there is a cost because you're providing it to a service to the people who need it. You probably can't afford it. Does that make sense?
Yep, I, I can very understand where, where you're coming from. That's not going to be reported here. The, it is. So when we are looking to acquire additional residential property and as and when they, when we do acquire property, that will come forward as a separate business case to Cabinet. And they will be, you know, that, that portfolio is, is valued and reviewed annually on, on a need basis. But it, it wouldn't form part of this reporting process.
Joe, aren't we saying that we own various different properties for a range of different reasons? So we've got a lot of parks, we've got Highlands Park, Highlands House. We're not looking at those and saying, how could we turn those to account? We think that having parks available for the citizens of Chelmsford to use is a return in itself. We've got a property that we own and occupy because we need somewhere from which to, to dispatch our, our freighters to go and empty the bins and for a whole load of other reasons, including offices. Those reasons may, may be changing as a consequence of social change recently and we can keep that under review. We've got property that we own for leisure centres and museums and crematoria and so on. We've got property that used to have a swimming pool on it. And we may be looking to redevelop. And those are all different reasons from the, the one that you've been talking about here, which is owning property for the sake of generating a return on it. And I think that's the bit that we're talking about and, and, but clearly we do need to look at those other properties and keep them under review to the extent that they're not needed for other purposes. Then make sure that, that, that we're maximising the value to the council. Do you want to expand on that or, or just? And I'll bring Roy Whitehead in.
I'll, I'll nod and agree. That's, that's exactly the, the, what I would have said.
Okay, councillor Whitehead.
Yes, yes, thanks, thanks very much, Chairman. Yeah, I understand what you've just said. But equally councillor Clark is not entirely wrong because if we look at the proposals, what's in the agenda, we're asked to consider criteria and requirements for the future and so on. So one of the things we're looking at tonight is indeed that. Now, we own investments and being one of the instigators of that, yeah, I'm entirely happy that the criteria that was set remain to be the same within the city boundary. Everybody knows the city includes Southwood and Ferrars. Good lord, get shy if you don't know that. But, but seriously, I think it's very important that we do actually have lists of what they are and what they yield. Because at the moment we don't. This may cause problems though, because you're back to blue paper at that stage, I suspect. Because some of the information may be something that we wouldn't wish to disclose. But ideally, surely we need a list of all the properties coming to this committee in the same way that we know where we're putting out 20 million pounds and 10 million pounds and so on. So, so we have a list of the properties. So we have a list of the properties that we own, the one we bought recently, yields X and so on. We do also need a separate list of properties that we own for redevelopment because they do have a value. They may not have a yield, but they have a value. And are we looking at yield or value or both? Logically, that's the situation. And you've got waterside, loxide and half a swimming pool and the rest of it. I mean, you could sell loxide tomorrow if you wanted to. It must have a value and you can put it on the market. So we as a council need to say, should we be doing that? It's probably more important than selling half of a shopping centre actually to look at the redevelopment sites. It was the policy in the past to sell off many, many old sites that were valueless or appeared to be. Councillor Clark told us we were selling off the family silver, I remember at a meeting recently. But we weren't, we were selling off the family rubbish heap and making money out of it, and that was the difference. Now we do have some silver, but surely this committee should know what that is so that we have a separate list. A third list, you're right, is parks and all the rest of it. Well, that's not our job, they're operational assets and that's not what we're here to look at. But surely the investment assets that we have include sites that we actually have, will have considerable value really. So that we need to have details of those and we as a committee should be making recommendations based on the value of those sites to Cabinet and so on.
I'm going to ask whether Mandy Fay wants to come back on that. Do you want to come in now?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The thinking behind the proposals was just to concentrate on those commercial properties that are directly with, we purchase, we're getting a rental yield and to look at those in the same way as the money we've invested in cash deposits. I take on board absolutely your comments about that we need to have a list of those properties and the yields, albeit that that may well be confidential, but so that we can understand the yields we're getting and put parameters around them. And we're trying to develop a strategy for how we might, or the strategy, the parameters for any purchasing or any monitoring of those. It was not intended to bring the wider investment, such as kind of regeneration investment properties within this remit because they are held for numerous other reasons and to support numerous other aims of the council rather than purely for investment returns.
Sorry, could I come back on that? Yeah.
Yeah, just before you did, all I was going to say was I'm not sure that it's within the terms of reference of this committee to look at those at the moment, although it depends what you mean by investment properties, but.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think we bought the gasworks as an investment property and we intend to use it in various ways. Who knows what's going to go on there, whether it's a car park, social housing, blocks of flats, I don't know and so on. But unless we look at that, we're looking at our total property portfolio, which councillor Clark rightly suggested. Our yield on that is a lot less. I mean, at the moment it's what, six percent or something rather on what we're showing. And in fact, if you add the properties that are yielding nothing, then our yield is less. And so we surely as a group should say, hang on a minute, we're not earning money from that and you'll have reasons on your list that you'll produce, I'm sure. But if this, if the members of this subcommittee aren't aware of all of those, how can it make an investment decision? Perhaps others who haven't spoken yet could offer their own views.
I'm happy to consider that in the round and look at what information we can bring back to the next meeting. That was after all, the purpose of this evening is to find out what information the committee requires. So we'll take that under consideration and look at what we can produce for the next session.
Can I just make one comment though? Which is councillor Whitehead just asked how we can make an investment decision. And isn't part of the answer that we're not here to make investment decisions. The subcommittee is not intended to be a consultancy to individual investment decisions. So it's a decision on the overall investment strategy. But I think interpreting what you said in that broader sense, then we can take that away and think about how we can respond to that. I've got two more people wanting to speak. Firstly, Martin Bracken.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to do two things. First of all, I agree with councillor Whitehead that we should definitely be having the list of those investments and that should be on blue paper because that is going to be containing commercially sensitive information. But I also believe that we should not be, as you just said, we're not the committee to make decisions about what we should or shouldn't be investing in and what we should whether or not we should be disinvesting in some of those regeneration projects. That's something that tends to be subject to a business case which comes to Cabinet and is discussed individually. So I don't think that's the case for this committee to be doing that. But I certainly agree on the criteria that we've got so far. That needs to include a list of the yields that we're getting from the properties we already own.
Okay, Andrew Social.
Thank you, Chair. It's largely been covered by what councillor Bracken just said. But basically, I think the review of the redevelopment properties and the progress of that is a matter for Cabinet to review how their redevelopment plans are going rather than this committee. Maybe we should know the total numbers, but really the strategy and so on for redevelopment is a cabinet number, I think.
Okay, thank you. And Dan Clark.
Thank you, Chair. My question was basically to be around the same as councillor Bracken, so I'll withdraw at this point. Thank you.
Okay. I've got nobody else wanting to come in at the moment. I'm not sure those last few comments required any response from Mandy or Joe, but I'm going to give you the opportunity to come back if you want to.
I'll let Mandy go first.
No problem. Nothing from me, Chair. Take on board the comments that have been made this evening and we'll work out the information for the next meeting.
I was just going to say, the list of property assets, again, rents against valuations, I don't see a problem with that on blue paper. It'll be fairly evident in the body of the report anyway in terms of how they're performing. So we can schedule that in a table, that's fine.
So if I bring us back to the very end of the paperwork for tonight, the investment portfolio reporting criteria. Joe suggested six criteria and item one was any changes in the portfolio in the period. It's sort of implicit in that, that we need to start with what is in the portfolio. So that, I think, is partly what we've been talking about. And then we've said we'll take away that question of how far that should extend and the proposition that councillor Whitehead raised, which is that it should go beyond what we've been calling the commercial property investments and into those other land holdings that are being held with a view to development, but probably not to parks and other, certain other properties. But we can take that away. Is there anything else that anybody wants to raise on this topic? Or should we go back and remind ourselves what the what the recommendation was? I'm not seeing any hands up, so the the recommendation was that we consider the report and appendices, the information requirements for future meetings and agree the next steps of the programme of work set out in the report. So I think we've had a good discussion around that. I think we're probably all agreed what the next steps are and then we can come back in October. And I think that the end of the paper, the main paper, on page 22, set out a timeline, which is we come back in October. There'll be more data following the conversation we've had. We can agree the indicators, the data, the criteria to be included in the investment strategy for next year, which then comes back to us in December. So does anybody want to say anything about that? Or can I take it that we're all agreed? Right, silence. So I think that's agreed then. And that takes us back to the main agenda. So we've done everything on the main agenda. The only item left now is urgent items, urgent business. And Dan Bird, I don't think there was any urgent business, but can you confirm that, please?
Yeah, I can confirm there isn't any, Chair. Thank you.
Right, okay. So unless anybody desperately wants to say anything, I'm not hearing anybody. I shall simply declare the meeting closed. So thank you very much, everybody, for attending and I look forward to having a further discussion in October. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Chair.
Thanks, Chair.